Good afternoon. Welcome you to the Tuesday, July fifteenth work session for the Glen County Commission. I've asked Commissioner Duncan to do the pledge and Commissioner Swift to do the invitations. Please stand.
Please bow your head. Dear Lord, we thank you for this beautiful day in the Golden Isles. Pray that you would fill our minds and our hearts with your spirit. Amen.
Good morning and good night. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, we're going to receive a proposal regarding the Enman Solar Cape Road landfill. Mr. Smith?
Good afternoon Chairman, Board, Danny Smith, Assistant County Manager. Wanted to talk to you this afternoon, we received a proposal from Enman Solar. And it's just an initial proposal to possibly lease our landfill, our Cape Road landfill, for solar use. The Cape Road landfill is approximately a hundred fifty acres in size. It is a decommissioned landfill. We are still in the monitoring period and have another approximately three years to go before we're released from that monitoring. Two things to note, even though we are in the monitoring period, this is still doable. We can alter the permit if we choose to do so to allow different use through EPD. And even after it's released from monitoring in 2027, that doesn't give us carte blanche to use that property however we want to. It still must remain a decommissioned landfill. As I said, this was an unsolicited proposal. They came to us. And this is their initial proposal that you have in front of you, which is to lease approximately seventy acres to place solar panels on that property and generate power and sell that power to George Power. Our role would simply be to lease to them for the use. In addition to the lease, there's a benefit to us. We currently are maintaining that property. Public Works spends a fair amount of time mowing and trying to secure the property. It has been a parcel that we have had difficulties keeping secure in the past years. It's almost impossible to keep a chain of gain out there. People want trespassers to go in. There's two borrow pits that people like to fish in. A lot of four-wheel and ATV activity on the property. Nothing terrible, but it's a nuisance and difficult to maintain the property. This would alleviate the county of having to do that. The leaseholder would be responsible for maintenance and securing the property and have a presence there on a regular basis. What we're asking for today, and I'm going to run through a little bit more, is just the, your blessing and authorization to talk to this company and begin a negotiation with them. It's not to sign an agreement. It's not to enter into an agreement. It's just to talk to them about a possible lease and negotiating that. They have, they initially came to us in May and they have given a proposed timeline here for implementation. That's a proposed map. That is the current site, so. You can see the parcel lines on there. That is what the county owns. What they're proposing to use is all of the capped area that apparently is not forested. So some of those forested areas are undisturbed or not disturbed as part of the landfill activities. They have no interest in leasing that portion. These are just images of other solar facilities that this company is currently operating. They're proposing a thirty-year, a twenty-year agreement, I believe.
It said thirty. That was going to be my question there.
So they're proposing a thirty-year with two additional five-year extension options. That's what they're proposing right now.
It's a hundred fifty acres there, there is seventy of them.
That's correct. The other, the other acreage, we've got borrow pits and forested area that aren't suitable for use for a solar farm.
Did you do that on, I don't know, lease?
We had to work through those details, but generally the one exception to your year rule is when the, let's get a little bit technical, when the county acts in a proprietary kind of business-like function and you're in the market, so to speak, you can do under term agreements like that. So in this case, it would be a revenue generator as opposed to a purely governmental function. So there is a way to address that, yeah.
And we did reach out to George Power and talk to them about other entities that may be interested and it's, it's, it's an interesting business. George Power was not able to recommend another entity that might be interested and told me that this comes up very much on a case-by-case basis. Either there's a demand by George Power that a company will take advantage of or the company will invest, as Enman's proposing to do, and then work a deal with George Power. My guess is if they either have a deal with George Power or they're willing to, once we commit to the possibility of working with them, they'll reach out to George Power. And they would have some infrastructure that they would have to construct to tie into George Power's network, grid, I should say.
So it looks like, like, can you get fifty-two thousand five hundred dollars a year? Thirty years, which equates to a million five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
That is what they're proposing. It's the fifty-five thousand plus a two percent annual escalation on that.
And right now, we're getting nothing.
We're getting nothing and we're sending staff.
He's fucking no-brainer to me.
I would agree. Now, we still are, for the duration, we have EPD monitoring that is performed and maintenance. This would alleviate some of the maintenance, like the grass cutting and the security issues that we have.
Do you have any regrets there is through South Brook?
That is correct.
Is there a possibility of finding another regress? How far is it over to ninety-nine from there?
It's not terribly far. It's within a mile. Ninety-nine would be difficult because there's a rail line there. But coming back to Cape Road is a possibility. On that, I believe on that south side. I think so.
Periline?
Periline, yeah. That is a possibility. We do not own any roadway, county roadway in there. You know, that's something for, if a company wanted to come through there, they would have to negotiate. I will tell you, the only, we talked to them about construction and bringing in the panels on tractor-trailers is the only heavy impact. And that's a one-shot deal. Once it's set up, once it's installed, there is not a lot of expected traffic or construction traffic in and out of there. So it would be a limited impact on that roadway in duration of time that they would be bringing that in.
I see it's worth having a discussion. I would agree.
For your timeline, how long does it?
They're wanting to move forward and begin discussing and negotiate a possible lease pretty quick. So they, you know, they came to us initially late May, first of June. And we talked to them a little bit to get some details worked out. We wanted to check with George Power. See if there are other, you know, other easy options before we brought it to you.
Just if it's got a construction start, give us the time, excuse me, how long it would take from start to finish.
So according to this, and we're already outside of that timeline, it looks like, they did not on construction start. No, they did not. We can find that out, but they did not. About twenty-four months of construction finished, so.
I just have one question. I mean, it looks like a win to me, but how does the seven hundred and fifty dollar per acre compare
Well, being, being a, being a closed landfill, there's not a lot of options. So, and I don't know what they're paying for other solar leases around the state. That was some information that George Power was not willing to provide to me.
But the property is virtually unusable for just about any other purpose, so.
I wouldn't say virtually, but it would require investment. If we wanted to, let's say we wanted to make it a park, it would require a permit modification, investment on our park to do so. And park was just a, just an example. This is not going to require any investment on the county's part and would generate revenue. So I would say it's not impossible, but it is difficult to do so.
They would maintain all, all the stuff that we were going to do.
That is correct.
Anybody else? Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you.
We're going to receive a preview from first Ms. Tanya and then Ms. Kim for the county's new website design. Thank you.
Good afternoon Commissioners Tanya and Chief of Staff. Prior to Kim's presentation, I just wanted to say a few thank yous to our website points of contact, the directors, the Sheriff's Department, the Board of Elections, the Board of Appraisal and the Appraiser's Office, E nine-one-one, and especially Christina Redden at the Board of Elections Office. As you can tell, there was a long list of thank yous there, and the reason for that was because the overhaul of the website project has been large. Several months ago, we put together a small group of internal staff to assist Kim. And these staffers have taken on tasks from everything from data entry to testing of the website, to the progress we've made so far, and content review. All of this beyond their normal scope of their position. So I'd just like to express my appreciation to James Manny and Michael Gleaves and Avery Dahl and Morgan Scott. They all work in different departments throughout the county. Their directors have given them time to work on the website with Kim. And none of this would have been able to be possible without our website administrator, Kim Ransom, and all the work that she's put into what you're about to see. So without further ado, we're excited to show you what we have so far.
Good afternoon. My name is Kim Ransom. I am the Web and Digital Content Administrator. And I am here to show you the long-anticipated sneak peek preview of our new website. This is the website that we have grown to not so much enjoy. It is a little clunky. It's happened a couple of challenges. So we did partner up with our vendor interpersonal, our selected vendor was Interpersonal Frequency. They came through and started with some significant research. So this, I do want to start with the fact this is a very data-driven, research-driven project. We're at about twelve months right now to date. That included research, design, development, and training. Once we kicked off our website redesign, we began with interviews with our executive leadership. Some of the key needs that were identified with our current website would have been better navigation, modern design, and easier to use. We conducted a survey, a community survey with over three hundred and eighty different responses, which informed our priorities for increasing our lowest-performing tasks, such as finding our county services, applying for permits, making payments, events, news, as well as finding information on our boards, committees, and elections. With this new website, there's a side-by-side image. With this new website, we have addressed not only the following, making things easier to navigate, cleaner, and more accessible. More, I mentioned more accessible because we found out in our research that seventy-six percent of our users were using a mobile device. The current website is not friendly at all, but with our new design, we do have some friendly use. As you can see here with the little scroll, our feature services are highlighted with icons. We have a "I want to" section where folks can quickly say, "I want to apply" or "find a job," "make payment." We have an area where we can highlight some of the what's happenings. For example, we have, we're in the heart of hurricane season. We can go ahead and highlight how our folks can stay informed. We have an easy-to-use news room. We have an easy-to-navigate upcoming event sections, which are tagged to all of our departments. So you can easily navigate through events that may be, that you may be looking for depending on the department. And our footer menu has been improved significantly with quick find icons such as "Contact Us," "Customer Service," as well as "Permits and Licenseing." Here's a preview of one of our department pages, "Customer Service." Customer Service receives well over a hundred and fifty phone calls a day. So it's very guaranteed that we make this page easy to use and navigate for our citizens. As you can see here, we have quick buttons to interact with our recycling, reporting issues, trash, contact information, as well as some feature services that our folks get calls for all the time, such as trash. Here's a preview of our trash page. This is inactive construction, so please be gentle with the feedback. But we can quickly identify our dropout centers, the information that is necessary for the citizens so that they can handle their need, their business needs with the county. Our reported issue is the C-click Fix that we are using very actively, where our citizens are able to report issues using C-click Fix on mobile or they can navigate to our website or call Customer Service. One thing I would like to highlight here, one thing I would like to highlight is our new features, which I want to start with our enhanced search. Currently on our website, you cannot find anything. You go to the search tab, you can type in whatever you think you need, and it will not show you a result of that document, that image, or that page. With our new website, you are able to, you're able to type in "report issues" and it will find "report issues." Is that what you're looking for? The very first result is "report issues" and it will quickly take you to that page. We do have what's called, I want to take, let's say, go back a little brief second here. Let's get over my breadcrumbs. Here on the page, here at the very top above the title, the page title that says "Report an Issue", you'll see some blue links, "Start at Home," "Government," "Department," "Customer Service," and then "Report an Issue." This is called breadcrumbs. Our breadcrumbs have also been improved. Breadcrumbs are used to help the citizen or the viewer navigate. Also, so from this page, they're currently on "Report an Issue." They can go to their breadcrumbs, hit Customer Service, hit Departments, hit Government, or hit Home and be automatically navigated back to those pages. We have it now, but it's not nearly as robust as our new site. Here I'm showing you this same example of searching for dog parts on our current website. It gives you nothing. We're not able to find reports. We're not able to find dog parts. But with, like I just showed you on our new website, I'm going to go back a slide just so that we can see this video again. With our new enhanced search feature, it will use, it's an intelligent search feature that finds keywords. The keywords will be found in documents. They'll be found in the tags for images. They'll be found in page titles, summaries, et cetera. One really cool thing that we have also done with our new site is implemented microthemes. Our microthemes will be applied to public safety, nine-one-one, the Sheriff's Office, Blithe Island, as well as the Board of Commissioners. This micro-site, the micro-theme implementation will allow our public safety departments, the Board of Commissioners, Blithe Island, they'll get a different look and feel. So although they're under the Glen County umbrella, they'll still have our branding and things will, it will not take them outside of our playhouse or our mansion. They do have individual identity that they can stand out and be recognized easily. Our next steps ahead will be implementing a document repository. Glen County IT Department, they are working on document repository for keeping our minutes, our agendas accessible. Moving forward, we hope to continue with having an enhanced feature that will search keywords on all of our minutes. We don't have that now, but this is something that IT is working on and this will be implemented prior to our launch. Also, I will mention that our project status, as Tanya mentioned, we have increased our staff. The vendor has also increased staff. They've had some staffing issues such as the project, our project manager, the vendor, the project manager on the vendor's side, we lost him about two months ago. So that has been, let's put a hurtin' on our timeline. But with their increased staff and our increased staff, we are looking at a project completion by the end of summer. Here's a preview of the Blithe Island micro-theme, as well as the Sheriff's micro-theme site. Any questions?
We have a great many senior citizens that live in Glen County and we just, and I know that a lot of them want to actually speak with someone on the phone, so this, this website has phone numbers that people can actually call and talk to someone if they need to. And is it, and I know you're a computer savvy and I know you came from IT, but does this also, someone, like, we got old guys, like Vice Chairman Neil here. Old guy, he, and I'm sure he's had a hard time trying to figure out stuff on the computers.
Yes, sir.
And I just want to make sure that we do have an Asian population here and they would, I know they get frustrated when they can't actually speak with someone if they need to. And I wondered if there is some software in there that can make it a little easier for older people to understand it. I know you understand it completely. You helped design it and your generation is very, you know, aware and astute to this, but my generation is not.
Yes, sir. We did keep you in mind. We have made sure that all of our phone numbers and during our final review right now, what we are currently doing is making sure all phone numbers, all emails, they're hyperlinked. What that does is it helps someone that needs to make a phone call. Here on our, this is the contact section on the Customer Service Department page. As you can see, under the contact section, it has the address. There's a blue link. It's underlined in the Google Maps. Then you have a phone number and email. Those links will help the person on their mobile device, on their desktop, laptop. Once you click on those links, it automatically makes a phone call. It automatically sends an email. So that has been added to ensure that you can navigate and use our new website.
And did you title that page "Old Geezer Page"?
I'll work on that after this, sir.
So are you in the base testing phase now, is what you would call it?
Yes, sir. We're in what would be called UAT, User Acceptance Training, uh, Testing. So our staff, our internal staff, we're going page by page. We're testing our links. We're testing buttons. We're testing, we're making sure our sentences are, have no grammatical errors or spelling errors. We are checking to make sure if it says it's going to trash, it actually goes to trash. So yes, during this phase that we're So yes, during this phase that we're in right now that we are projected to be completed by the end of, we are testing and auditing all of our pages.
Okay, and would that test include some of the folks that offered input at the beginning of the project?
Can you be a little more specific? Are you?
Perhaps you talked to a hundred eighty or three hundred eighty citizens in the community, whatever that number was. Would those, any of those folks be um, testing this during this beta phase, this U A T phase? So you'll have uh, real work testers, people out there that don't have the savvy um, of the team.
That's a great question. We have discussed um, sending our audits out to non internal staff or non tech savvy staff. We haven't gotten there yet. We're not, we haven't passed our first round of U A T just yet, um, but that is a discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
So Commissioner, there's just a few things. The um, obviously this kinda ties in line with um, the board direction to try and make things. You know, our, our cultivated culture of service excellence is one of your goals, but really it's about making um, doing business with Glen County easier, more efficient. So we think that this is gonna help. We've, we've got a lot of complaints over the years over our website and it's, and like Kim said, I think clunky is probably a good word. But one of the things too that uh, that they were able to do is look on the backend and see where people are going. And so when she's talking about these buttons that are gonna be up front, those are the, the high volume areas that people go to. So it would be easier for people to get to where they wanna go. Um, obviously when we, when we do launch it, there's gonna be some bumps in the road, but we're trying to minimize those now. Uh, so we just asked for, for some patience, but I think in the end, uh, we're gonna see a much more uh, user friendly website, much more. Um, I guess uh, probably, you know, better information that's out there and just, you know, by and large, more efficient uh, way to do business with Glen County. So thanks, Kim. And I, it's been a ton of work so far for the staff to get this, get this done. It's, all the departments have contributed and uh. We just uh, we, we think that it's uh, when, when it does get up and running, uh, it's really gonna be a benefit to the community, uh, not only the, and, and staff as well. Uh, as the citizens.
And we are putting controls on that different department heads cannot change our structure and that kinda thing, right? That, that you'll have managers.
Yes, sir. We will implement the actual workflow process after audit, before lunch. But after we've completed our U A T and we're good with all of our pages, the pages have passed, everything works. Then we will cut off uh, the access for publishing and they will, it will go through a workflow process. Where I go to the department head and myself to, to approve those changes before they're published live.
And I'd just like to add a personal note. I've, I've watched you work on this for the last year plus. And uh, and I'm impressed with what you're doing and, and how you get the cooperation of all the different departments. Uh, job well done so far. We're, we're looking forward to uh, seeing what it's gonna be for us.
Thank you.
I'm gonna give you a high five.
Before I, before I sit down, I ju- just gotta note that I forgot, following up on your question, Commissioner Tanya. We, the three hundred and eighty plus responses that we received at the start of this project. Um, was called Voice of Citizen. Voice of Citizen will continue through launch. So we could, we will continue to receive that feedback even post-launch.
Very good. Thank you.
Yeah, Commissioner, I'd also say Tanya, Tanya really jumped in and kinda took an executive role in helping uh, Kim get through to everybody, get everybody to, you know, do what they were supposed to do. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, because I know it's been a, a momentous task, to say the least. Okay, that done, Mr. Attorney. Do we have anything? Yes? Would you fill it out for us?
Pending uh, litigation and uh, the property, yes.
Somebody can make a motion, please?
Motion for uh, goes active session for pending litigation and uh.
Property, property. Property motion is seven all in favor. We're, we're in recess.
When we come out of executive session, properly motioned and seconded, all in favor? Entertaining motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Properly motioned and seconded, all in favor? Thank you, we're adjourned.